Well, good evening. Today is November 21st, 2024, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are here tonight and those watching online. Director Paul, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Approved by Director Connor, seconded by Director Hume. Is there any discussion? All those in favor that are in force say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. The first item on our agenda will be to receive a school report about Neal Elementary School and Burnsville High School from Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, Jesus Sandoval, and Lyle Bomsta, Principals Sarah Petrella, Advanced Learning Specialist Ryan Moran, multilingual teacher, and some Burnsville High School students. Welcome.
Thank you Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. Good evening. This is our second installment of our school report series. If the board might recall that our first school report really tried to illuminate and highlight one of our essential elements, assessing culture. So this school report, we have two fantastic principals from two fantastic schools, Burnsville High School and Neal Elementary, talking about the valuing diversity in action. So our intent with the school board report is for you to get some, a real picture of how the tools of cultural proficiency aren't just words living on a website or a poster somewhere, but how we expect them to be living and breathing in our schools each and every day. So without further ado, Principal Lyle Bomsta and Principal Jesus Sandoval.
Well, good evening. So I get to go first. So my team, I have two teachers with me today, and they'll be up here shortly, but we're going to talk about Makerspace and SWEL. So SWEL stands for Schoolwide English Learner, or Learning Model, and it really is an interesting new PD model, co-teaching model, and Ryan's going to share that. And then we restarted and kick-started our pathways, especially with an emphasis on Makerspace, and it's been really fun to see that the kids are fully engrossed in that in a kind of a scheduled way, and it has lots of value to it. And so we're going to be sharing two exciting things with you, and I'm going to have them come up and join me.
Okay.
Ryan, come on down. Here, I'll scoot you over.
I'll one in the middle.
So Sarah Petrella is our Advanced Learning Specialist, and she is going to share a lot of great things about Makerspace.
So, good evening. I get to tell you about how our Makerspaces are promoting equity inclusion at Neal, but also throughout the district. First, Makerspace impowers innovation with hands-on learning. Our youngest students are building bridges that are able to support weight with pennies, right? And our mid-level kids get to build towers that can withstand the forces of their classmates around them. And our oldest kids are using electricity to set off alarms and turn on fans. These experiences not only reinforce their understanding of creative problem solving, but also highlight how innovation can lead to meaningful solutions within their lives. Second, all students, without needing to be identified for any specific program, get a chance to explore and to spark curiosity and develop those problem-solving skills that are vital for their future. It also fosters collaboration and real-world problem solving. So kids get a chance to work together, which is going to be useful throughout their lives. It teaches the importance of communication and taking on diverse perspectives of the classmates around them. Our Makerspace can bridge technology and creativity. So kids develop technical skills like coding while utilizing their natural curiosity and creativity, so they can code a video game, or they can code a story that animates what they want to say, right? And finally, it helps with social emotional learning. So students have a chance to work through adversity. They get a chance to fail. They get a chance to fail in a really super safe environment, and then through hands-on innovative solutions, they can fix their failures and they can see how valuable their thinking really can be. It fosters that problem-solving mindset and helps us in 191 develop resilient, adaptable, and perseverant students. And that's kind of what I think, but I also talked to a couple of kids about it too, and here's what the kids are saying. Regular school traps your mind around the idea that there's always a right and wrong answer. Makerspace changes that. Makerspace is a place that lets your brain grow in different directions that you usually don't get to in school. So thank you all for supporting this program and helping the all-around growth of our students.
Thank you, Sarah. I love the student quotes. Those are perfect. So Ryan Moran Moran is one of our multilingual teachers, and he's going to be sharing something that we're trying this year with SWEL, and I'll let him do the talking and explain it a little bit more.
Sure. So SWEL stands for Schoolwide English Learning, and it's a peer coaching model that's been put into place by Dr. Michelle Vanegas from Hamlet. At Edward Neal, this is our first year implementing it, and at our school, it looks like our multilingual department partnering one-on-one with a classroom teacher to develop tier-one supports that focus on comprehensible input, basically bridging the gap between what students can understand and the content that's being taught. Some examples of that are things like using more visuals in upper grades, sentence frames, and allowing kind of bilingual communication amongst students. This does not only support ML students, multilingual students, but it also has been proven to increase academic proficiency in native English speakers as well. So it's a knock-on effect for the whole classroom. The three teams are assisted by our instructional coach, Emily Burt. She's been meeting with us throughout the year and will continue to meet with us, and she helps us by providing resources and ideas. Another thing that she's helping us with is developing bite-sized PD that we can put into place during morning sessions that last maybe 15 to 20 minutes. And this allows teachers that are not in those one-on-one partnerships to also have access to multilingual strategies to help their kids in the classroom. So, what else was I going to say? It's an authentic pathway that addresses a lot of gaps that we see in instructional practice across the board, and it's helping our students access content better and feel more at home in the classroom. It's, the end goal of this is that by the end of this year, the original classroom teacher in the one-on-one partnership will have a lot of confidence in practice using these tier-one supports, which will allow the ML teacher to partner with another teacher next year and kind of continue to build this collaborative model across the school. An added benefit of this too is that our multilingual teachers are getting experience and training and coaching, and so the hope is that eventually we can act as instructional coaches onsite, providing classroom teachers with on-the-ground, real-time ideas that can kind of positively boost their classroom performance. And that's pretty much what SWEL is, so thanks for listening. Appreciate that.
Well, thank you. That's the kind of our, and the Neal portion. Do we just? Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Directors of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Battle. This evening, I am excited to share with you some components within our high school, Burnsville High School. And shortly, I'll be joined with a handful of ninth graders and 12th graders that will share their experiences. But before we do that, you see on the screen a profile of learner. I wanted to start with how these are more than just words on a paper. This is truly embodies what we at Burnsville High School believe, wholeheartedly. For example, when I think of civic-mindedness, I think of recently the election that took place, obviously two weeks ago. But what you may or may not know is that we actually had a student mock election that was organized very well by our social studies department, and we had students that were engaged in being civic-minded, understanding that at some point, most of them will be able to, as some of them are right now 18, but eventually others will be given an opportunity to cast their vote. And so not only was that an amazing day, November the 4th, the day before the election, to have students really truly participate in that practice, but when you look at collectively over the state, 480-plus schools participating in that, it's great to see that Burnsville High School was one of those 480-plus schools. And honestly, also it's important to know that collectively, when it shows the number of students that chose to vote on that day, we were right behind Minnetonka as almost 1,500 students chose to cast their vote. And so that's a great example of civic-mindedness. But it didn't stop on November the 4th. November the 5th, the day of election, there were 68 of our students that chose to give back to the community in a way of being part of the election judge. And so within our precinct, and so that was amazing accomplishment, and that was on their choice and their doing. And so those are two examples of how we at Burnsville High School have cultivated and are supporting and encouraging that civic-mindedness piece. When I look at other items within the profile of a learner, I think of life-ready. And certainly attendance has been a topic on many schools' agenda across the state, and certainly we are advocating for supporting and nurturing that important piece. And so life readiness, when it comes to being on time, when it comes to preventing absences, is an important skill. And so that's another example of how we are having some really focused attention on attendance and how that relates to the life readiness piece. And so what I would ask is that I have the three ninth graders come join me up here, and as they are transitioning, I will introduce our three ninth graders. We have Aubrey on my left, we have Sabrina Abdi on my right, and we have Leila Shepherd. And so these ninth graders will be able to share their experiences shortly. One of the emphasis that we have within the school is our Ninth Grade Academy. And so our Ninth Grade Academy, a handful of years ago, there were some emphasis within our CISA department that needed to bring some attention to one of our most critical grade levels. That first year of high school, that importance of transitioning and supporting, cultivating that first year of high school to ensure that all the remainder of three years, four total, that there would be ongoing support and that foundation that's built. And so this year, we put an extra emphasis on the Ninth Grade Academy. In a couple ways we've done that, is we've brought in a ninth-grade coordinator that helps facilitate team meetings. And so this year, we have teachers that are, and students that are in teams. We have four teams, the Ninth Grade Academy, and each day, the core teachers are working together, meeting collaboratively, and really trying to embody and envision the many things that we want. And those many things really are the basis in regards to the four pillars, as you see on the screen. The importance of transition, not only going from middle school to high school, but also from ninth grade to 10th grade, and thus forward. The importance of our instruction, the importance of support and community. And so with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Aubrey, and she's going to share a little bit of her experience in regards to what that means for community.
Hi, like he said, my name is Aubrey Dace, and I'm here to talk about the community at Burnsville High School. Honestly, I feel as if, as my first year as a high schooler, that the community here is very welcoming, and I feel like I belong at Burnsville. I think it's great how every day when I walk through the doors, I'm greeted by two counselors who look like they're happy that I'm here. I feel as if the administration really cares about all its students and especially is focusing on freshmen. I feel like tardy checks keep me accountable to be in class, and it shows that they want me to do my best and be in class, to participate in all of that. I feel as if how diverse Burnsville is, is a community in its own, to have other people like me compared to other schools I've been at. And most importantly for me, as a teenage girl, I feel like this is the least non-toxic school I've been at. I feel like there's not that much toxicity, and I feel like that's refreshing coming to school every day, to have teachers happy to see me, friends happy to see me, and I'm happy to be there myself. I feel as if it's just a very welcoming community, and I'm really happy to be a part of it, and this is the best school I've ever been at with the community, and that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Aubrey. Next up, I'm going to welcome Leila to share her experiences, and she's going to share a little bit about transition.
Hi, my name is Leila Shepherd, and I would like to emphasize on my transition from middle school to high school. This change has brought a mix of excitement and a little bit of apprehension as I walk into a new and more academically challenging environment. However, I am very fortunate as the support Burnsville High School has brung to me, both in my educational journey and my athletic pursuits. Burnsville High School's tardy sweeps and Student of the Month program has encouraged me to get to class on time and improve my grades so I can have my picture on the screen. That's all.
And Leila was Student of the Month for October, so congratulations, Leila. Next, we have Sabrina, and Sabrina's going to share support and what that looks like for her experience.
Hi, my name's Sabrina, and I'm highlighting the incredible support Burnsville High School has to offer, especially ninth graders adjusting to a new environment. Trends to a high school can be challenging, and having strong support is essential. What stands out to me is the well-rounded system of social workers and counselors, all dedicated to supporting students, the school, and ensure students can be, can have easy access to help, creating a supportive environment.
Thank you. And so those are just three examples of how we feel the Ninth Grade Academy has impacted and influenced our students, and I wish I could bring more. But from a timing standpoint, one of the other things I want to share, two other things, family engagement in our pathways. And so family engagement is something that we at the high school really feel an affinity to, to try and bridge the gap between home and school. And so we've done that in a variety of ways. We have a consistent newsletter that is sent out Sunday evening, and that Blazing Times is what it's called and referred to, and through that, just one of the pieces of communication that we have a constant, consistent manner. We are working closely with community ed and our district office, ensure that we have representation in the monthly meetings for our Somali meetings and our Somali families and our Spanish-speaking families, and so we're incorporating that. We have started and continued that Parent Advisory Council. That's a great avenue for any parent within our Burnsville High School that wants to provide some feedback and also learn aspects. And so we meet twice a month, and it's a really good sounding board for me and others as it's a direct connection for our families. We know that there's room to grow, and we have other ideas and other focus points to make that connection through a new program, Parent Square as an example, and how we can leverage some of those pieces. So with that being said, I'm going to transition to the last piece, and so thank you so much, ninth graders, for joining me. And I'm going to welcome our upperclassmen, 12th grade. As they're coming up to the area, I'm going to welcome, on my left, Allison Bergman, on my right, Emma Logresa, yeah, that's okay, yeah, and then Gustavo Garcia Guzman. And they're going to share with you in a little bit their own experiences. And so the pathways you heard from our elementary school at Neal and how that shapes up, certainly pathways are intricate part of our district. And so we wanted to, I wanted to make sure to share with you what the pathways looks like. Last year, I spoke about the associative arts pathways and brought some students here. Just to share with you, right now, we have a current number of 35 juniors that are part of that program and 41 seniors. And so we're excited to have that first student group graduate in this class with their associative arts and their high school diploma. In regards to the pathways in itself and how intricate it is for us to have a program where we have talented staff that are able to really dive into some of the higher-level courses. And so our students sometimes walk away with internships, they walk away with experiences that propel them past graduation, because ultimately, we want students to feel not only comfortable but confident after graduation with their diploma. And so as you'll hear, some of the student personal experiences from these 12th grade students, and so I'll go ahead and go ahead and let Allison speak about nursing, I'm sorry, speak about the facts, culinary arts. Thank you.
I'm a part of the culinary and hospitality pathway at the high school, in which I have taken almost all the classes provided by this pathway, leading me to gain certification and certificates, and providing me with experience in this workforce, causing me to have interest in the hospitality industry after high school and further pursuing hospitality after I graduate at St. Paul College.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Then welcome Emma, and Emma will share about the nursing pathway. Trying to get every little detail. Please, Emma.
Hi, I'm Emma. If you haven't, I have a pathway article too that has more details on my journey through it throughout elementary school and on. But my sophomore year of high school, I had a best friend who was a part of the nursing classes that I was thinking about taking my junior year, and that, the way she was talking about it and the way it helped her feel inspired me to take those classes to see if I really wanted to go into the medical field. And by taking, I took healthcare core curriculum with Ms. Dempsey, and she really pushed me to strive to be the best student I could be and to really learn about everything I needed to know. And then later, that second semester, I took the CNA course that is provided at Burnsville High School, and I was supported by student, other students in that class, and my teacher to be the best that I can be, especially since I would be working with other people. And the experience I had there were amazing, because I got to experience real-world clinicals by going to Ebenezer, and I was able to practice not only on mannequins, but also on my fellow classmates. So it was a nice experience to really have that, and because of that, I was able to get my CNA certification with a lot of support from my teacher, and she was the one who really believed in me and pushed me to be the best I could be. And because of the pathway I decided to take, I got accepted to Concordia St. Paul and got direct admissions into my nursing, into the nursing program there. So it really makes me feel great, because I know that once high school's over, I'm going to be a CNA while also attending college, learning how to be a registered nurse.
Thank you. Yes, yes, it is exciting. Thank you, Emma, for sharing your experience. And lastly, Gustavo. Gustavo will share the educational pathway and what that means for him.
My name is Gustavo, and despite being in the country for only one year, I have a very limited knowledge of the English language. Miss Parent, my ESL teacher invited me to take the Intro to Urban Education class and multicultural education, given through a dual enrollment system with the Metropolitan State University. And that was an eye-opening experience for me, because I got the opportunity to see the real challenges of education in this country, and more specifically in this society, in this community, and that inspired me a lot to take action. So this year, I decided to become more involved with the Hispanic community and its educational challenges. So in my first period, I'm helping a student who doesn't know how to read in any language. He is 20 years old, and although he speaks Spanish, his educational gaps are very big that he cannot read in any language. I am also helping, being a teacher assistant, where I translate, I explain concepts in Spanish in classes like chemistry and earth science. The Educational Pathways Program motivated me to address the issues that affect my community and to give a meaningful difference in return.
Thank you, Gustavo. And so thank you so much, 12th graders, for joining me up here. They'll be around like our ninth graders. If there's questions specific to them, you may go ahead and head back, and I'll bring up Belmont as we wrap up here, so.
So one of the things that I challenge our principals before they're, as they're preparing for these school reports, is to check in on our, we have a lot of different rubrics and guidance around our tools of cultural proficiency, including like leadership look fours. So I'll just read to you the valuing diversity. So just kind of, "When encountering cultures different from theirs, the culturally proficient leader's approach to diversity is to value, esteem, respect, and adapt all while maintaining high standards and expectations for excellence." So I hope that you heard evidence of that in the school reports. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Do any board members have any comments or questions on the presentation?
No questions, but I have a couple of comments. First, Neal, great job. I especially liked the comment on the Makerspace presentation about learning from failure. I think that's a really important lesson that is easy to not teach or easy to forget about sometimes, so I think that's really important, and I was glad to hear you talk about that. With the high school, I really appreciated you starting out with the connections to the profile of a learner and just the great stories from the students about their experiences at the high school, both with the culture at the high school, which is really good to hear about, and then also their experiences with pathways. And I think sometimes it's easy, you know, I'm probably as guilty of it as anybody, to kind of take it for granted. We know how great Pathways is, but we don't always hear those individual stories. So it's really important to hear those stories and make it, like you said, Dr. Belmont at the beginning, to make it really feel real and really make it more than just words on a page. So thank you for that.
Ditto to what Scott said, but also I just want to add that I really appreciate you students stepping up and coming and reporting to us. It means a lot. Thank you, principals, for getting them out here. And I'm just excited about the choices of careers that you 12th graders are doing now, and then also for your future. I mean, that is something. I mean, you've already achieved so much, and it's so good to know that our high school is really nurturing you the way you should go. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for these presentations. I think it's easy for me to say that school presentations are my favorite because of everything that we have in paper, you know, it's the examples and the practices what you guys bring out. On Edward McNeil, I'm really looking forward to the SWEL program. That's great to hear and I'm looking forward to hearing next year's report on how it benefited and how it changed student performances. On the high school, you know, pathway programs, you know, I think that's probably one of the most underrated things that we have going on. It's great and it's great to hear from the students. A couple of things I heard from the students was belonging. That's a huge thing and also the environment and it being non-toxic. High, you know, ninth grade is sort of like the first impression that they get of the high school and for them to be using these words actually is very encouraging. And also, you know, for Gustavo, you know, who's only been here for a year and he's already giving back. He's already moved on from his own self and trying to give back, you know, is very inspiring. So thank you to all of you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you Chair Miller. Yes, agree with what everyone's already said, of course. Principal Baumstah, I really appreciated how you and your team brought to life the pathways because we know that, you know, families are eager to learn more about what do the pathways look like for our youngest learners. And you really did a lovely job bringing that to life, so thank you for that. The SWEL program, I agree, it's really exciting to hear kind of that organic growth for, for our teachers to be able to support each other and kind of fulfill the hope that, you know, that we've talked about for a long time about, you know, teacher leaders and, you know, relying on each other to, to learn. So thank you for, for bringing that up. And Principal Sandoval, really more of a comment for the students because we learn wonderful, get great information from the adults who present to us. And the students who present, you just bring your learning to life for us in a way that a report doesn't quite capture. And really appreciate your coming up and presenting. It's, you know, it's not often easy to, to get up and present to a group of people that you've never met before. So, you know, thank you for that. You did it, you did an awesome job. One question for Principal Sandoval. The parent advisory council, how are families recruited into that?
Yeah, it's a great question. And so, it's really an open opportunity. We meet on Mondays, six to seven o'clock, right in the main office. And my hope is at some point, we will need to find a larger room. And so, it's an every, every other week ordeal and something we started last year in around this time, November, December. But this year, we started right at the beginning. And so, to those that are listening in or hearing this, you are invited. We encourage families and parents to have a participation and not that they aren't, but having their voice at a, at a level that, that is, will be heard because it's important. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you to our principals for an excellent presentation. Especially thank you to the students that came and spoke this evening. We understand that can be daunting at times and you guys did an excellent job, so thank you very much. For anybody that's fascinated with the workings of school board mechanisms, we're going to move on to that now. But now also be an excellent time to slip out if you want to get on with the rest of your evening. Do be aware that this room right here still carries sound back in, so if you could just hold conversation till you leave the, that part of the building, we'd, thank you a lot. Okay. Next up, we'll be receiving a fall enrollment and staffing report. Stacy Sovin, Executive Director of Administrative Services, and Aaron Tinkelberg, Director of Communications, will be making this report. Welcome to you both, or maybe just please. Aaron will join shortly.
Good evening Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Each fall, we bring to you a presentation on our current enrollment. What that, the current reality looks like as of October 1st when we, when we report to the state. A look back to past data, including this year and prior years, and also looking at October 1 enrollment trends. I should keep myself up to pace there. This year for October 1, our population is at 7,049 students, K-12. These are cheeks in the seats, as we say, actual students and isn't reflective of our ADMs. One of the points I will call out at this point, this, the FY25 budget is built on 7,000 students, K-12. So this is good news. We're a little bit ahead of budget as far as the number of students that are enrolled with us. Kind of the same breakdown you can see by grade as to where the 7,049 students are. Pretty equal between elementary and secondary. Yep, it's already behind. There we go. Our October 1 K-5, our average building size is about 361 students. You can see the breakdown in each of the different areas. The schools vary depending on, on just the enrollment. A lot of that varies with our kindergarten. Last year, we had a larger-than-expected kindergarten enter for Vista View. This year, our larger-than-expected kindergarten came in at Ed Neil. So sometimes it just rotates on us and it's just like, okay, we'll try to find it. But once kids are coming into kindergarten, we are seeing that we have steady enrollment at the elementary level over time. I am having an issue tonight. Secondary then is just under 4,000 students, again, with about 2,000 students enrolled at the high school. Then the two middle schools have 642 for Eagle Ridge, 737 for Nicollet. And then our Virtual Academy, our alternative high school, our transition program, and our Virtual Academy for the high school make up the rest of the, the makeup for secondary. One thing I will point out, both BOSS and the Virtual Academy for the high school, as the year goes on, those numbers will increase. We have seen that year over year. They started off a little bit on the lower side, but as the year goes on, they'll both gain quite a few students. Composition, looking forward. This is a breakdown of our, our students by ethnicity and also then the additional services in which they receive. So special education is pretty flat, as we'll see in the few slides up. Around seventeen percent, our LAP population is actually growing quite a bit to twenty-seven percent. And our free and reduced meal eligibility is at fifty-six percent. That's about a twelve percent decline based upon the direct certification and how that's impacting us going forward. Next is the current reality and the breakdown of ethnicity at each of the sites. Again, that gives you the different categories on the bottom. Pretty, pretty common across most of the sites. This slide here represents our special education. Again, seventeen, eighteen percent is roughly the, the makeup of our population at all of our schools. And you can see which schools represent. I do want to call out the fact that some of our schools have focus programs or setting threes, so the percentage may look a little bit higher than other buildings. Some of the reason is they have targeted programs at those sites. Our EL students by building, you can see the makeup there. One of the things I'll point out for this, as it relates to our staffing for our EL population, we do differentiate our staffing based upon the level, at the service that students are classified as they come in. So somebody that may be new to the country may have very limited English, so they're in a kind of a category one, level one. Some that have some basic or have started to, to move in more acquisition, we had level two, three, and four. So level one receives a higher level of FTEs allocated for them and for more time. So smaller classrooms, more FTE, extended time with an EL teacher. So our, our staffing is differentiated based upon not just the number of students, but the level of service in which students are needed. And then our free and reduced population here across by site. Roughly falling anywhere between about forty-eight percent to just a little over seventy percent, depending on the site. So this is looking back for about the past ten years. The resident total for the district as far as students within our district boundaries has declined over the last ten years by about five hundred students. That seems to align also with what our demographer is looking as far as going forward, where we'd be probably losing close to a thousand students. So that trend is pretty much there. One of the things that I do want to point out is about the third line, third row from the bottom. The difference of students that are either open and rolling out or attending other districts compared to those who are coming into the district, over for the last four years, we are actually now capturing, retaining more of the students than what we have in the past four years. So that's a good sign. Then you have a breakdown of different graphs, a way of looking at this. So we have seven, seven thousand four hundred and eight students, non-resident students attending here, six hundred, six hundred and eighty of that, seventy-four oh eight. And then you can also see the amount of students that are choosing, choosing elsewhere and why, whether it's tuition out residents, charters, just other schools or possibly private schools as well. Other districts in which our students are attending, the largest district that a number of our students attend is both 196 and Prior Lake. They make up the majority of where our students attend if they're choosing elsewhere. Again, pretty much same information, just broken out into a, a table. Non-public schools, we do have about eight hundred and thirty-nine students that do attend private schools. Can kind of see the trend line of those schools over the last five years. Trend data, just quick definition for our early ed population. ECSE is Special Education for Early Childhood. VPK is our voluntary pre-kindergarten. NSR would be our school readiness programs. So some of the figures that we're looking at in those areas, this does make up, we do get a little bit of ADM based upon these students that are attending in the different programs, which does also support the funding and our ability to provide these programs. ECSE over the past three years has been pretty stable. Our VPK program is growing, continues to grow, as we also are being awarded more seats from MDE, so that's a good sign. And school readiness for the past few years has remained pretty flat. This graph here shows the breakdown by elementary school as to the trend or two-year trend is whether growing or declining. And then also the same type of a graph for secondary. Our five-year trend, declining but not as quickly as it had in the previous five years to what is represented here, I would say. Two thousand twenty-one, we had a drop. Then if you recall, two years ago, we were, had an unexpected surprise where our enrollment actually increased or stayed flat. Then last year again, we had another little drop. This year is smaller, much smaller, and actually if we pull our enrollment report year over year at this point in time, we are ahead of where we were last year for enrollment. So that's, that's a good trend. Again, now looking at a five-year ethnicity trend as a district, you can kind of see where our growth is occurring. We are increasing in the area most significantly with our Hispanic population is the fastest-growing one within the district. Also right there is by percentage would be our American Indian and Alaskan population is also growing significantly. Special education trend, as you can see, percentage has been pretty flat between that sixteen, seventeen percent over the last five years and even the numbers really have only varied from about thirty students up and down. Our EL trend line has seen a significant increase since two thousand twenty-one, of moving from twenty percent to twenty-seven percent. This also is reflected in our staffing where we have moved, we probably have increased close to ten FTEs over the same amount of time for our services in these areas. Free and reduced remains pretty steady. We had a couple of bumps there with the, the direct certification program as it was, as that is now dropping, dropping off. Sent out a little bit of a memo on that. We are back to around fifty-six percent. This will impact our compensatory going forward unless we have a different formula or if they don't continue to hold us harmless going forward with that. Then just wanted to kind of break down, this is a new chart, one that we haven't provided in the past for our elementary buildings. So the percentages, the percent that that site represents of all of our elementary students. So for Ed Neil Elementary, they represent eleven percent of all elementary students. Okay? The amount of variances, those are, are students that are residents of the district that choose other sites because of childcare, work, a number of different reasons. So we allow them to move from one school to another school. So Ed Neil would represent of all of our variances represents ten percent are attending there. And then open enrollment, all of the students that are open enrolled for K through five, six percent of the students attend Ed Neil out of that population. One of the things that I will kind of point out, our Virtual Academy for elementary schools is small but mighty. It represents one percent of all of our students, but five percent of all of our open enrollments attend the Virtual Academy. So they do have seven percent of the variances because it's a school without boundaries. Somebody is coming from one of the other brick and mortar buildings to attend there. And with that, I will now turn it over to Aaron.
Thank you Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. We thought this would be a good opportunity since we're talking about the makeup of our students to also talk about the makeup of our staff, so presenting that tonight. Of course, these are dashboard metrics as well. So we'll just look at current data and comparisons and then also the work that the district is doing on this front. So looking at twenty-four, twenty-five as of right now, two hundred and fifty-five out of our thirteen hundred and eighty-one employees self-report as black, indigenous, or people of color. And that is compared to fifteen point seven percent, so that's eighteen percent, that's compared to fifteen point seven percent last year at this time. So a little bit of an uptick there. Just looking at different employee groups, of course, the highest percentage employee group is our superintendent, one out of one. Hard to stay anonymous in that group. Hard to stay anonymous in that group. Then other groups that show a high percentage of staff of color are food service, custodian, and the unaffiliated group as well, which kind of includes a conglomeration of employees, but including our cultural liaisons. And then in terms of groups that made significant change from one year, from last year to this year, our, as a group, the teachers went from about six percent last year to eight point four percent this year, so fifty-six out of six hundred and sixty-eight teachers. That was a pretty significant jump among the groups. And then also our clerical staff, twenty-one percent last year to twenty-nine point four percent this year. So some increasing across, still obviously not in line with our, our students in terms of demographics, but maybe moving in the right direction. And then some of this, a lot of this is information that you've heard before in, in other reports, but this is the work that we're doing to, to grow the diversity of our staff. Of course, we have really strong grow your own programs, both for our students who are in the educational pathway, we heard about one of those tonight, but then also for our staff members for opportunity to grow in their career from whatever position they might have currently to a teaching position if that's something that they want to pursue. We have a great story on our website right now about a handful of those teachers who moved from either being an educational assistant or in clerical position to a teaching role this year, and it's, and it's pretty exciting. And we're thankful for the grants that are helping make that happen, of course. Of course, having a stable enrollment creates stable employment. The fact that we can retain a lot of our staff because we've retained a lot of our students is really helpful. And then we're also doing a lot of work to recruit a broader pool of candidates and from, so attending various career fairs or recruiting fairs. And then also this year, starting the program to recruit international teachers, partner with international teachers. We brought in a handful, I can't remember the exact number, six or seven? Nine. Teachers from the Philippines who are now working in the district, which has been also really exciting as well. And of course, and it's not listed on here, but some of the sort of ongoing work that we do as a district in terms of being, trying to be a culturally proficient school district, both as, in terms of working with our students and our communities, but also being a culturally proficient place of work is really probably what's most important for us. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, and board members, please?
Thank you Chair Miller. Couple of comments and questions. Thank you Stacy for pointing out that we are doing a better job of retaining enrollment. Having that kind of comment pointed out is, is reassuring and makes, makes us all more hopeful that the efforts that, that our staff are taking to welcome families and make sure our students feel like they belong, as we heard in the previous report, that those efforts are, are yielding results. Looking at slide three, I guess it's really more a comment that, you know, we have a larger senior class than the, than this year's kindergarten class. So I imagine that those welcoming activities are focused and, and increasing among the VPK's families because we have had that bump thanks to the legislature.
You mean in terms of work to ensure that they feel comfortable and want, and ideally will choose to continue here?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think that, that's something that we focus on, the transition to kindergarten is something that we focus on every year. I think it's entirely possible that it's, from a demographic point, we just have a smaller kindergarten class this year than, than typical. But we do all kinds of certainly communicating around transition to kindergarten and trying to help families answer the questions that they might have, feel most as comfortable like they understand what kindergarten is all about, what it's going to be like. We're coming into that campaign actually right now from a communication standpoint where we'll be pushing out information about what daily like, life is like in kindergarten, and then there'll be kindergarten information nights and other activities in the spring. So that's definitely something that continues apace.
Awesome. And a question on VPK, is there, are those seats required to be filled by in-district students or can it be any student regardless of residence?
And there are just seats that are available for us?
Just seats, so any student, any family could enroll their student, okay. And then just a, a comment about the, the elementary comparison, that was a really interesting slide, thank you for including that. It was interesting to see the indexing, the over-indexing and the under-indexing of variances and what that might mean. And having done the, done a little bit of math, it was, it was great to see that, you know, the, the buildings and have sizable student counts and yet we're still within those recommended guidelines for square footage per student, taking all the other information away, you know, knowing that there's, you know, there's, there's other space that needs to be present of, you know, for staff and, and storage. But reassuring definitely to know that even while we have, you know, William Byrne is, is one of the largest elementary schools, that the space is still adequate for those students.
Is there comments or questions?
Slide, I wrote slide fourteen, I'm not sure which one that is, but. Oh yes, the summary of residents and non-residents slide. I noticed, and I think I probably ask this every year, so forgive me if I do, only goes through twenty-three, twenty-four. I assume that's because we don't have the data for twenty-four, twenty-five for residents attending and.
Next fall.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so we, we know what we submitted, but now over the next part of the year, it gets cleaned up from what are all the other districts are submitting, and then everything kind of like, no, we had that student, no, we had that student.
I'll look for you to ask this question again next moment when I forget again. But, but I will reiterate also what Director Alt said and what you mentioned during the presentation, I think this is certainly one of the first times I can remember, if not the first time, where the combination of our enrollment is slightly higher than we budgeted for and we're retaining more of our students within the, just, yes?
We're attracting more students to us.
Right, we're bringing in more, which I have a question about that also.
Yes.
Yeah, the, what, and the, oh yeah, the attending elsewhere is still not going in the great direction. All right.
But the net is positive, but we are attracting more.
Things are stabilizing a little bit anyway, compared to many other years. Do we think, I know you mentioned VA when you talked about the elementary school, do we think that's a factor in why we have our, our open enrollment numbers are increasing or do you think there might be other?
The virtual academy is definitely a draw. I, I called out just the elementary, but the middle school and the high school, that is attractive to families outside of our district. And like I said, as the year continues, those numbers will continue to increase with virtual academy, so that is a good thing. I will call out, I know the, the virtual academy for elementary is, is small as a whole, but I do remind, as long as we continue to main class sizes or right sizing, if you will, we don't have the overhead. And it's, it's cost efficient and it is able to sustain and it helps us move kids into our middle school and our other grades, which do see increases as we go.
And it's a way for us to meet the needs of those specific students where that's what they need.
Yes.
So that's, that's great. I also thought it was encouraging that it sounds like our overall staffing is trending in the right direction in terms of reflecting our community, reflecting our student body, and so still got a ways to go, but it's, it's probably a generational thing, but it's encouraging that, again, one of the first times I can remember, that's also been moving in the right direction, so.
Our principals and directors are doing a fantastic job.
That's great.
Thank you.
Question? I think it's two slides down from this one. One more? Yes, okay. So our highest numbers of Burnsville residents are going to Rosemount, Apple Valley, and Egan. So my question is the school borders, I'm a little bit confused. So depending on where you are in Burnsville, you might be at the, you know, school border within like the Apple Valley, you know, like I have family members and stuff of, you know, moved recently and they've been going to Burnsville school, but now, you know, the busing is, you know, now you're like with one ninety-six. But, you know, I mean, they're still choosing to bring their kids, you know, drop them off and stuff like that, but how does that situation play into the data here?
So this, what this reflects are the students who actually live within our school boundaries, not necessarily the city boundaries.
Right, okay.
Because there's a whole lot of Burnsville that is not one ninety-one. So families that are actually within our school boundaries that are choosing to attend other schools, that's what this reflects.
So a family who lives in Burnsville but outside of our school boundary?
Is not in this number.
And bring their students still to us is?
That's open enrollment.
Okay.
Yep.
Coming in.
This always?
Coming in.
That's the open enrollment coming in.
Yes.
Some of these six hundred and eighty students.
Right. Any comments, questions? Just, I need to add one quick thing before you. I became recently aware that at the virtual academy that we allow, where we have some students that spend, they're in a hybrid, like at the high school, they can spend some time. How do you plan on classifying them in the future or are you, haven't made that decision yet, are they Burnsville High School students or virtual academy students or? They're a little bit of both. Numerically, they can't do that, or are you literally doing that, giving them like a point five each or? It depends on the amount of time, but they are, you know, the students that, if we have the capacity in virtual academy for, you know, a class has twenty students and we have high school students that are needing that course, we will allow them to enroll in the virtual academy. So it's the same, it's the same student. Ask your question a little differently. I specifically mean, I know there are some students and, and, Patricia Central, you could probably support this, there are some students that are literally spending one or two days at the high school and then three days at home on, through virtual academy, right? They're, they're not double counted. Okay. If that's one of the questions. And they are split as far as the portion of enrollment between the two sites. To add up to the one, if they're here full-time within the district. All right.
So the one full student will be like point six at the high school and point four at VA or some, whatever, whatever the math works out.
Yep. And that's, that's more for your ADM type of calculations. All right, well, thank you very much for your time tonight. Lastly, are there any reports from board members regarding board committees, appointments, and school assignments? And I'll just run through our standing committees, starting with the legislative, and I know Director Chester's not joining us today, so Connor, I'm going to throw you on the hot spot, is there anything to report about the legislative committee? Did you meet at all?
My goodness, yeah. I should have.
I apologize.
No, that's okay, I should have remembered that she wasn't going to be here. Let's see, what did we talk about? We just talked about projecting what, what proposals that we want to cover in the upcoming year and, you know, kind of which, what things are most important, kind of going down the line, and we listed a lot of things on the table that we want to propose to our legislators and I think that's about it.
So we have not had any guest appearances recently?
Oh, no, no.
And do we know if we have any in plan that we can announce or?
No, just plan on going, just, yeah, no, making proposals to our legislators.
Okay. All right, excellent. Policy review, Director Marisol?
Yes, so we met this past Tuesday, the nineteenth, and we've been kind of going down the list of the policies that have been impacted by this year's legislative session, and we've reviewed some more that will be coming to the board meeting, soon board meeting. And our next meeting will be on December seventeenth.
Thank you. Negotiations, Director Earl?
I have no report.
Very good. And then any other board committee reports?
I attended the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce Policy Committee meeting on Friday, November the eighth, so right after our last meeting. And talked a little bit about the levy, the tech levy approval and the election results, but the majority of the call was spent getting updates. We, the, the city of Burnsville was well-represented at this meeting, and they did a pretty detailed presentation of the planned updates to the police and city hall facilities and a lot of questions from chamber members about the franchise fees that will be assessed to help fund that over the coming years. So that was a lively discussion. And then I'll just mention, on December the sixth, they are having a welcome meeting for newly-elected officials that represent Burnsville all the way from the school board to the state legislature to, when I went a couple of years ago, Auntie Craig was there, I don't know if she'll be there this time, but like all the way up to our congressional representatives, so that's coming up on December the sixth. For any of our newly-elected members, check your email. That's my update.
Any other committee? Yes?
Okay, this is my report on the AMSD meeting for November first. We had two speakers, two sets of speakers. One was the Commissioner, Tiki Brown, she's from the Minnesota Department of Youth and Family Services. She just wanted to introduce a new program, which their mission is for services for children and students and what they need. This program was launched just July of this year, and they're concerned because poverty is the number one issue children are facing right now. And so they want to make sure that that's not a hindrance in the schools. Problems and needs, preventive services for family needs, and how parents can handle discipline of young children before they get into the school system. Also, this program is up and running and will thrive to work through its transition because it is new. And then she just wanted to mention to please reach out if anyone, family members, teachers, parents can address any of these needs and just make them aware of any students, any student needs to this program. Okay, and our other set of speakers were superintendents, three superintendents, one from St. Anthony, one from New Brighton, and one from White Bear Lake. They're just talking about, they were talking about success of a graduate. This program they were introducing provides, it just defines clarity of what students need to be successful in transitioning into our world today, and the strategic, the strategic plan that are in place for that. And they said the responsibility lies with the school board. So they said by, by they want us to instill effective communication skills to achieve students to become self-learners, problem solvers, and critical thinkers. They feel we should have compassion for staff, students, and cultures, have student advisory groups, and ask students what they need to be successful after graduation, listen to the students, provide appropriate training for teachers, implement the REED Act, which we are already doing, access global travel for students that will be paid for through a Madagascar Conservatory Program, which will enrich worldwide culture awareness and learning. And last of all, to make sure that there are extracurricular programs and activities for students, like helping seniors, caring for zoo animals, to teach them much-needed responsibilities through community ed programs, and they want to focus on middle school students because they feel they really need this. And that ends my report.
Okay. Any other reports, excuse me? No? All right, thank you for your reports. This concludes the information portion of our meeting tonight. Now we'll move to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Marisol.
Second.
Seconded by Director Alt. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Seconded by Director Alt. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. It's now time to move to new business, and we have just one item for consideration. We are being asked to approve the financial audit report for 2023-24. This recommendation is being presented this evening by Stacy Sovin, Executive Director of Administrative Services. Welcome, Stacy.
Thank you. On November 7th, Tyler, Tyler Denny, our Director of Finance, as well as representative from our auditing firm, Bergen KDB, presented to the board a report on our audit, and we're pleased to present an unmodified audit report. This is the highest level on which we can receive. They also discussed briefly our fund, our unassigned fund balance is in a healthy position for the district, which is, again, provides lots of options for the board moving forward. I love that ability to provide options for the board, so you have those moving forward as we go into our next budgeting season. Also, just a quick word for our public, that we do post all of our financial information on our website. This includes our current budget, previous budgets, as well as our audit results. So everything is transparent and available to the public if they want to go. There is just tons of information in both of those documents, as you're well aware. It is my pleasure tonight to bring you a recommendation that the Board of Education approved the financial audit report for 2023-2024.
Is there a motion to approve the financial audit report as presented?
So moved.
Director Hume?
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. Is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The time is now 7:41 PM, and having no further agenda items, I will call this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Thank you.